All right, looks like we're all here seated and ready to move on. So the first thing on our list is Public Works, or I guess the second thing technically, Public Works.
Um.
So Loretta had to go home this morning. She was not feeling well, but we have Richard here and do we have Mike? Just Richard?
And Mike.
Oh, there he is. Alrighty, guys. Um, just to heads up, the first item that you see on the action items for the Safe Point Services for Solid Waste, we we remove that because we need to sit down with the Treasurer's Office and make sure that the how we deposit our receipts at the landfill. And the services that we use are gonna work with them.
Great. Alright, so then we have, looks like the emergency pump for uh Beers Cove.
Yep, that's me. And just so, I just wanted to let you know, I know last week I said, oh, it's not an emergency, but after reviewing uh where we're at and where we stand and and the other items of consideration, like an extended renting of the pump. Uh, we're definitely feel it's an emergency. I mean, it would cost thousands extra to keep this pump in there for an extended period of time, and it's just hard to justify. And also, just to let you know that we have the money within the Beers Cove budget to do this, so there's no special ask.
All right, well, that sounds great. Any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I'm supportive.
You're muted.
I'm supportive.
So that, so just to make sure we're all on the same page here. As an emergency purchase, then we can go through a quicker process to actually purchase a pump. We don't have to go out and do the whole bid process and okay.
Yep, great.
Can I add one thing on to that, Richard?
Yes, please.
So I believe that we would need to possibly transfer salaries and benefits in excess of fifteen thousand down to operating in order to make that purchase. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
So if if they are required to do that, that would require board action. And we could do that on potentially December 5th. Does that work, Richard, for you in your timeline?
That should work, yeah. We're expecting the pump to show up next week, but yeah, we're going forward.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Mr. Collins?
Uh, what I have is a follow-up on Four Corners Road. Um, the request for either vacating or gating the road because of the solid waste issue. Uh, there's actually burned out cars um on adjacent properties along that road. So what we did is we talked to Crab and Crab said that if we do gate the road, we need to take it off of our road log. Well, taking it off the road log will lose our gas tax uh fund for it. So it's about twenty six hundred dollars per mile. At three point two seven miles, that's about eight thousand five hundred dollars per year. That we would lose out of our two point four million dollar gas uh gas tax. I looked at the last twenty years of what we put into that road. Uh, it's been about twelve thousand dollars. I believe it was in two thousand sixteen when there was a road rally. Uh, we actually put some some gravel in there, but uh just doing some numbers um myself, uh it would look like we'd need to put about two hundred forty four thousand dollars worth of gravel um to actually bring the road up to any kind of standard. You know, if you divide that by the eighty five hundred dollars uh per year, that'd take us about twenty eight point seven years to to recoup that. We did look into uh some right of way. Um, we haven't had, we haven't found any right of way actually, a deed of any kind. We just basically own own the road by prescriptive use. Uh, it was put on a road log in the late nineteen seventies. Yeah, it's 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 in pretty rough shape. I'm not in favor of vacating. I was looking at the option of gating. That's why we looked at this. The issue there would be we would have a loss of revenue. We could do some kind of agreement with property owners and say if there's any maintenance needed to be done on the road, if they ever started logging in there again, uh that they would be required to to provide that. Um, if we leave it open gated, it would still be a public access for foot traffic and and bicycles. It's just one of the options. There, there's a lot of debris out there. There's, there's boats and and numerous other things in the in the bushes there, so.
That's unfortunate. Sounds like it's become a a dumping ground. Yeah. That's too bad. And most people would, well, I just wish. Any comments or questions, Commissioners?
No, I had something for for Loretta, but I forgot what it was, so I'll have to wait until later.
Were you asking on this particular item?
Yeah, yeah, just this, any questions about the vacation or the non-vacation?
Yeah, I don't have anything right now. I probably want to consider it a little bit more and think about the pros and cons of it. Yep.
Yep, sounds good.
Are we under any type of timeline on this one, Mike?
Uh, the the three of the uh property owners have have actually paid um for their application for vacation. The fourth one was coming in. We talked to them uh about um gating it, and they said that that would be just, you know, just as well. Uh, so they were gonna go back and talk to the other three uh before they actually finish uh, you know, paying the whole application fee. So we're not in a critical timeframe, but it is something that they're they're gonna be waiting on.
Again, mine mine is always simple. Uh, the question is, is it uh possible that it could be need in any future time for uh uh our road system? And if the answer is yes to it, then it's a no for vacation. As it should be. That's what the provision says.
Yep. Yeah, and I I tend to agree with that in in this case in particular. I think um not real interested in the vacation aspect of it, just because it is such a long stretch of road and and it can't have value in the future, but I don't know, just the gated, the gated was a great option, it sounded like, and it's, we just have to contemplate the loss of revenue and what what that means, so.
Agreed.
All right, Mike, do you have anything else for us?
Nope. I don't reckon. We're just getting ready for winter.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, I did want to add one item to their agenda here under follow-up um or upcoming items. We were notified by the State Auditor's Office last, I think it was Friday, um, that as a part of their accountability audit that they do for the county, um, they went out and were following up on the finding associated, or the the loss that we were incurred out at the solid waste. Um, just to kind of give you a little bit of a reminder on what was done there. Once the loss was identified, um, we worked with Sheriff's Office to try and investigate it. Uh, it was determined that there weren't enough controls in place where we could actually assign the responsibility of the loss to any one individual. So they came, we went out and hired a private CPA firm to come in, do an internal control audit of the solid waste receiving process. We implemented all of the controls that they recommended. And then um as part of this accountability audit, the auditors went through that new process. Those things are actually in place and working, but they also wanted to add an item. Um, and so when they identified the item that they wanted to add, which is related to credit cards, um, they're actually going to be reporting it as a finding, which I've reached out to Tammy to try and get some additional information, and I'm waiting to hear back from her on that. Um, I honestly don't believe that it would warrant an audit finding. Um, but I my concern is that they're they're calling it a finding because it's because we incurred the loss there. Uh, and this isn't the first time that they've actually reviewed from an accountability perspective, the receiving process out at solid waste. And so might be a little bit of a, Richard, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, no, you pretty much summed it up very concisely.
Okay. So it's not like, it's not like we, they told us what to do and then we didn't do it. So that's I think they're they're overstepping, but again, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but hopefully you do reach out because it doesn't even make sense uh to register it as a finding without a note uh regarding the first, but. Yep, I would agree. And I don't see Leo on with us this morning, but um but yeah, so I can't get, I can't get his input right now, but I know that he was very surprised by the item being raised to a finding level.
Something you want me to follow up with, Mark?
Uh, you can follow up with Leo on it, Steve, for sure. Um, to make sure that we're on the same page here. I did.
Again, about traffic and speed there, and we put the radar signs out and things along those lines. But I'd like to get a little bit more information on all their other options from you. It might also be helpful to, I don't know if we've ever done this before, but it might also be helpful to send a survey out to everybody in the in that neighborhood and and get some feedback from the community on what issues they're seeing, when they're seeing them, what solutions they'd like. I know that the one we hear about most often is is uh speed bumps through there. Right past. So just wanted to raise the issue again. It's something we hear about periodically.
Yeah, it seems like we, I've been noticing there are a lot more people walking in that area. And it seems like when that is, when that's happening, that's when we start getting more complaints about the speeding. Because even if they aren't speeding, the perception, you know, right beside the road like that, it it gives you the impression that they're flying, you know, so.
I'm gonna piggyback on that and agree with the Commissioner. You got a couple of Commissioners that are asking for that. We might want to see what the eightieth percentile, like whether or not to uh uh the possibilities of decreasing it the same as the rest of the other side of the lake is one of the things that they're calling and asking about looking at. If 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 it is like they're saying with one section uh different, I do want to warn against um what we've looked at before when it came to speed bumps, that if we open up a door here, we'll be opening the door for a lot more. And I was always told that one of the issues of speed bumps is if they do eighty on it, you may be taken out of house when they hit that speed bump, uh unintended consequence.
Oh, nobody should be going eighty.
You can't legislate stupid, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mike?
Or Mark?
Or Mark? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, well, let's move on to our, we have a Parks and Trail Advisory Board interview. It looks like Steve is with us.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, Commissioners?
I'm looking for mine.
Did you find your application, the application and the questions, Commissioner Netherland?
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready. Thanks, DeMar. I I expect next time he comes to the door to get the superhero music.
Well, that would be funny. All right, all right, Steve, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for for coming in and and having, well, for for first for applying. That's awesome.
Oh, sure.
And so typically what we do is we have a list of questions that we're going to ask. We'll go through, we'll alternate back and forth on the questions. Answer, there's, I like what Commissioner Netherlands says, there's no right or wrong answer.
Okay.
And so here, here we go. Um, let's go ahead with Commissioner Netherlands first. Commissioner Shitty, I'll follow, and then we'll just continue with that order.
All right, again, welcome. Uh, the first question is, how familiar are you with the Mason County Park System?
Uh, not not entirely familiar. So we moved out in twenty nineteen, uh, and I've been hiking in the area, certainly. Uh, a lot out of staircase. Uh, and then I I live at Alderbrook, so Alderbrook Nature Trails. Um, but as far as uh Foothills Park, I've driven by a few times. Uh, not not super familiar with what with what's out there, but I've I've seen the list. I I look forward to visiting them all.
Steve, we're uh we're neighbors. I live right around the corner from you on Blackberry.
Oh, okay, nice.
But this is our first time meeting, so appreciate you stepping up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so uh what do you see as the function of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board?
Um, so based on my past experience with the Federal Way uh Parks, um, we kind of uh, you know, kept uh the pros plan in mind all the time. Um, we we helped with a pretty major update, that a five-year update. Um, we consulted on uh playground equipment um and actually did a couple of field trips uh to look at some some uh playground equipment that was on its way out of useful service. Um, so uh, we didn't really hear from the public too much. Uh, it was more engaging with uh Parks, Parks and Rec staff, um, which was great. Uh, I I learned a whole lot uh through that process, so.
All right, great, Steve. So why are parks and recreation services important to you?
I'm lifelong hiker, um, and I just, um, I especially on the trails part, um, but I've I've also got three kids. They're all grown now, but um we certainly uh enjoyed parks wherever we were at. Um, my wife and I were in the military and moved around quite a bit, so all three kids were born overseas. Um, so we had the Department of Defense Schools um to rely on to on the base, but uh it was always nice uh getting the kids outside in nature. Um, some of the European parks, uh, it's a, it's a high bar. They're pretty, pretty, uh, pretty well-developed.
So Steve, do you have any skills or experience that would benefit the County Parks Department as a member of this advisory board?
Um, yeah, I I think I've uh, I've been doing enough with the Mountaineers and with WTA uh that I can um be a valuable contributor. Um, I'm familiar with Robert's Rule supporter and and procedure and things, so um, I I think I think I'd be a good fit.
Then uh, why would, is, why would you want to sit on this advisory board?
Uh, just to contribute to the community and and ensure the long-term future of the Parks and Trails. I've got a long history of of volunteering in the community and um, I just feel like it's time to, we've adopted her home now four years, uh, so uh, time to give a little back to the community.
That's awesome. So that currently the board meets every fourth Thursday of each month at five fifteen. Will that work for you?
That works great. Yep, I'll, um, I I actually work in Seattle and participating in this one call from Seattle. Uh, but I uh work from home on Mondays and Thursdays, so Thursdays would be ideal.
Perfect.
Now, do you have any possible conflicts of interest that might arise during servant, while serving on this board?
I I don't believe so. Uh, anything I've done uh with the Mountaineers and WTA has been as a volunteer, uh, either board member or committee member. Um, that that'd be the only thing that I can, and I'm not sure the law from where I work at, uh, if if there are any dealings with Mason County or I suspect it's more, you know, LA Bay kind of focused. And I, yeah, I don't really have any decision-making authority over anything that would, that might cause a conflict.
Steve, is uh, is there anything else that you could tell us about yourself related to interest in serving on this board?
I'm sure. I just, uh, I I feel that draw towards uh community service and um ensuring the the future of the Parks and Trails um throughout Washington State, but uh in particular in my my home counties, so um, I think this would be a a great way to get back.
Great. And the last question, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I don't believe so. I've looked through uh some of some of the prior uh meeting minutes and things. Um, so I think I I've got a good handle on it. It looks very familiar uh to me, so um, I I look forward to to engaging with the group.
All right, great. So we, we're gonna thank you, Steve, for for applying first, like I said, and for also, you know, your your answers were spot on. They were really really good. I want to thank you for being um a part of our community as well. So what we'll do typically is we will discuss this at the end of our meeting.
Okay.
And then staff will be reaching out to you.
Okay, sounds great.
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thanks, Steve. All right, Commissioners, remind me at the end of this meeting that we need to talk about this. All right, Mark, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna move to Diane to talk about our lodging tax awards.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm presenting the lodging tax awards for twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, our contracts. We issued a request for proposals earlier this year in RFP for services that support tourism that could include visitor information centers. And we received five proposals. Lodging taxes met a couple of times to review these and come up with statements of work. And they're recommending that we award to the Northwest Event Organizers forty-nine thousand five hundred for the purchase and implementation of a tourism progressive application. And then for visitor information services, VICs, to the North Mason Chamber, forty-three thousand one hundred to the Shelton Mason Chamber, ninety-four thousand five hundred, and to the Mason County Historical Society, who has the museum, award sixteen thousand nine hundred. And then also to renew the contract, to extend the contract with Northwest Event Organizers for our tourism development and the support of the local festivals for six hundred forty-five thousand three hundred and seven dollars. So a total of just under eight hundred and fifty thousand from our lodging tax fund.
Commissioner Trask, you serve on this one, right? Yeah, I'll be supportive, uh, but can we ask for the very near future? That's a lot of money. I'd love to see a breakdown of what we're actually getting uh for it, uh, something that can be written down and show us perhaps a presentation, because that is a lot of money.
Oh, absolutely. And and I think Diane, um, we invited them to come, uh, unfortunately, um.
Zen, I'm aware, yeah.
Yeah, and so um, but otherwise they uh Rachel was going to come in and give us a a fantastic uh presentation on this. So I want to say that the 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 lodging tax board is is kind of looking at going in brick and mortar is not being visited as much as on an online presence. And so it it was important to many of the board members that we look in that direction as well. So I think that I I think that's a good idea, Randy, to have Commissioners or Commissioner Netherland have have Rachel.
Randy works.
Have Rachel come in and also the chambers and just give us a a brief presentation. It might also be a good idea to, down the road, add them to some of our briefings or or um our regular commission meetings to say there's a fly in here. I got it, never mind. Um, to have them come in and just kind of let us know how things are going. Um, I love it when we when we know what's going on in our community, and so just having them come in and do it, do presentations even that every now and then. Maybe giving us, um, letting us know what's on the calendar, what's coming up might be fun, Diane, sorry.
So we do quarterly meetings with lodging tax, so they they prepare quarterly reports. So I could ask them to present, you know, quarterly, or if the board wants just, you know, twice a year, whatever the board wants. And I did include in the packet their statement of works, so that way we knew their contract, what, you know, we're asking them to do for this money, but yeah, certainly they would be happy to present. But can I move these awards forward just so I can get contracts in for this year? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not saying the way I'm just saying for the future, because it's so much money. I would love to see what we're actually getting for it, that's all.
Yeah, and we would like you to see, because I mean, we all know Rachel does a great job and sort of the VICs. So they would be happy to present what they're doing out there in the community.
Yep, I'm good with moving it forward. Commissioner Shitty?
Yep. Yeah, I am as well. I just, one of the other things to um have for that, Diane, would be just some information on um, the VIC in Shelton at, the the chamber is running uh two blocks away from the VIC that the museum is running, and just sort of understanding the differences and what targets there would, people they're trying to target and how that all works. Uh, we don't have to talk about it now. That'd be a very conversation to have when you bring back some additional information.
Okay. We will do that. Thank you. We'll put them on the December fifth agenda of the contract, so that way we can move them forward.
Awesome.
Thank you. Is Kelly on here? Kelly, I don't think I know he's in this morning. He has, oh, there he is, okay.
Good morning. So in front of you, I have the contract for general toriel services for the county. Um, it ends the the end of December this year. So we went out for RFP. Uh, we had two contracts uh come back, one is from the local people that do it now, and then one other company, ABA. Um, the local postal came in at two hundred and just shy of two hundred and eighty, and the ABA came in at a hundred and ninety-seven. So uh I'm asking to uh have you guys sign a contract with the new company, ABA, for one year uh within a potential additional three years, um, if they do what we need them to do. And that would go to action on December fifth.
Oh, Randy, you muted.
It's apples for apples, huh?
Yeah, yes.
Because I really liked, we had a good one, so.
I'm telling, I'm telling you, this is the hardest thing I have to do. I mean, because we finally got what we wanted. And uh, so yeah, it's tough. It was, it was a tough sit down and talk with them.
Yeah, it's hard to justify that difference in number, so I'm supportive.
I am as well.
As am I. Appreciate you doing this, Kelly. It's not, this was not an easy one, because.
It wasn't. I I had a tough time with this one, but uh we'll get through it again. We've done it many times.
Yep, we have, we have. And I did notice that in there that that this is just, it's for a year, but with an option to to extend it for three years, and so um hopefully they'll, hopefully we won't, we won't have to go out again, but.
I I have sat down and talked with the new people uh three different times now. I had it in my office and went through them. Um, they seem very energetic and ready to, ready to start and ready to get going, so hopefully, uh, hopefully, yeah, they can do a great job for us.
Fantastic. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So we'll put this on the December.
December fifth.
December fifth, okay, perfect.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Kelly.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm next, and that was a good segue into the purchasing and contracting policy, which was the first thing on my list. So um, we break this back in October, and since then, um, have just made minor cleanup changes and a little bit of wording changes. Um, I continue to have um back and forth emails with um people in this morning on this, so I feel like we just need to uh cut it off at some point and get it, get this adopted, but um after going through it with Tim Whitehead um and others in the county, I just have a couple of wording change uh recommendations for this morning. So on um page two of the policy um under section A, the General Procurement and Contracting Policy. So it's A six point seven under New Grant Applications. I want to suggest that we um put new grant applications so that the board may evaluate the financial impact of the program and recognize new revenue and expenditure authority as necessary, and then omit the next item, which is A six point eight um recurring grant applications if there is a required county match. So I'm recommending that we delete that because it. um, delete that because recurring grant applications will be input into the county budget and will go through that process rather than needing to go in front of the board. Um, so that's the, the logic behind that. The intent of this policy is not to make things more difficult for, um, offices and departments, but parent government and, um, just make things hopefully easier for everybody. Um, so those are two of the recommendations. Um, the other one to make this more clear is on page three. Um, and this is also under section A. A ten, the Board of County Commissioners delegates approval authority to the county administrator for contracts fifty thousand and under. So I'm recommending that we delete that, um, section or that item under this section because it's already stated in the resolution that gives, um, the county administrator authority to sign for those um, contracts fifty thousand and under. And so this is a duplication, um, and not necessary under this policy. Um, and then I just want to clean this up a little bit more and make it a little bit more clear by, uh, the attachments to the policy, which are meant to be, um, a workflow or workflow elements. So there's three different um, types of purchases that we're looking at. The first one, um, is the public work, which is not limited to our public works department, but has an actual definition um, per R C W thirty-nine oh four oh one oh. So, um, so that type of purchase, I would recommend that we call that attachment A for the workflow section. And then the next one, the purchases of materials, equipment and supplies and leases of equipment would be attachment B. And the last one, the contract for services would be attachment C and then referenced in the policy so that it's very clear, um, that there's different types of, of purchasing. That's caused a lot of confusion, I believe um, in here. So is there any, anything else that you want to, um, say any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, back to, uh, six point eight, uh, recurring grant applications. If there is a required county match, I just want to understand because it sounded different than what I'm reading. This is the inclusion of this into this agreement, right? Or into this policy?
I'm recommending that we omit that, um, since.
That's what I thought I heard you said. But if it's a, if there is a required county match and, uh, each time it could be different, it could go up, it could be down. It's not going to be in the budget. It's not going to be anything. So how does, how do we justify that? The required county match could be five times the amount that it was the next year.
Well, you would see that in their, in their budget, right? In the offices or department budgets. And so I mean, I'm fine with leaving it in. It just makes it more cumbersome on the departments, um, to have to bring back their grant applications if they're um, recurring, um, which was my thought, but, um, it's up to you Commissioners, because you definitely, I mean.
Maybe if it's, if it's said within a certain percentage or something, just to completely whip that out seems dangerous to me. I, I, I see where you're trying to go with it, and I agree with you. I just, because a lot of the stuff we do is literally, it is cumbersome. It's over and over. Uh, but if it's within a certain parameter, then it is a nothing burger. But if it comes back with a specific big change, even if it's a recurring grant, it can put more onus on us. We could agree to pay another amount that's different than, uh, what we agreed to in the first place. And we may have had a long conversation that we didn't want to go past it. But if they don't have to bring it back, all they have to do is get it through the first time. That seems like it could be dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea to put in, um, like a percentage, um, in there, if it goes up by, I don't know, whatever percentage you're, you're comfortable with.
I, I, I have one, uh, twenty-five percent. I, I'm just throwing something on the wall. I don't know. I just want to make sure there's some type of a of a guardrail there to protect us so that we're guaranteed to know. The one thing about this is we as a commissioner are guaranteed to know what's going on and keep it for future thoughts or decisions when we see it. But if we don't see it, we can't rely on that after two, three years. We may not even have a clue what's happening.
I think it's, I also think that's important as commissions change. Um, you can't have an expectation that, um, you know, as the makeup of the commission changes, that everything else is, is, you know, it's going to be completely understood or that there's going to be complete agreement on things. And so I think that's another reason to do it as well as that transparency component where very rarely do the public, very rarely does the public have an opportunity to weigh in directly on the grants that other offices and electeds are seeking. And so this is a transparency component so that um, the community knows exactly what their elected officials are are doing on their behalf and, and have an opportunity to weigh in through the legislative process if they so choose.
Yeah, I would agree. I think leaving that in there, just because the, the, the commission has certain responsibilities. And, and, and I believe that that is one of them.
Okay. Um, great. So are you all comfortable Commissioners with leaving the recurring grant applications? If there is a required county match going up by, um, more than, or twenty-five percent or greater, something, something like that? Or do you want the amount to be lower, maybe, um?
Or listen to the commission, maybe, maybe they just want to keep it as it is. I'm curious what they, what they're thinking.
I'd be comfortable keeping it, it as it is because depending on the size of the grant, twenty-five percent could be a, a, a large number.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so we'll just keep that. Keep that in. And are you comfortable with the wording that I added under the six point seven? Um, so that the board may evaluate the financial impact of the program and recognize new revenue and expenditure authority as necessary?
I am.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. Then we will just, um, leave that as is. And are you, um, comfortable Commissioners with me, um, trying to make this more clear in the attachment A, B, C, um, that I referenced earlier on the different types of purchases? Right now it's all referenced under attachment A, which I think is confusing.
Yeah, I like it being separated.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
So, Jen, the one that I'm looking at in the packet here is the old setup.
Yes, I, I haven't, uh, changed it yet.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I'll make those changes and then I can brief it again next Monday. I can show you the clean version next Monday and then we can move it on for um, the fifth of December.
Yeah, I'm good with that because we need to get this finished. You know, it's not, it's not like the state auditor didn't tell us they want it done.
Right. Yeah, um, well, that'll be great to have, have it behind us. And it's definitely been a, a challenge. Um, I mean, even, you know, the comments that I'm getting this morning, I, I've had, um, uh, Todd Parker has gave me some really helpful feedback, but he's looking at it more from a the monitoring perspective and wanting things to be even um, tighter in our controls. And it seems like, you know, some of the electeds are not wanting it to be, you know, they want it to be, um, more, um, to be looser so they have more autonomy. And so it's just trying to find that happy middle ground is, has been difficult, so.
Actually, Commissioner, I want to make a comment on that. You know, I appreciate where they're coming from. I honestly, honestly do. Uh, and I've thought about it long and hard, and I hope that they will appreciate that we have thought about it long and hard. And just as though you think you are doing, uh, what you think is best for your position. I honestly believe that I am doing what is best for the county and my position. And it just so happens that our decision on this is the one that, that, uh, the rule for policy sits with. So, uh, although you may disagree with it, please don't think there wasn't a lot of thought that want to do it. And we think we're doing the best that we can. But again, remember, this is our job. Our job is to, to create that policy and to create in a way that we think protects the county over the top of ourselves and any other individual or elected that's out there. So nothing personal, uh, just doing the best we can.
Yeah, we said.
Okay, thank you. So the next item that I have is the final review of the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. And I'll share my screen. I do have, um, a couple of minor changes. So, um, the changes that I have are in the property tax, um, I made the property tax match the levy res- resolutions that will be, um, in tomorrow's, uh, public hearing. So the current expense, which is under the treasure, um, the property tax is ten million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars in the levy resolution at this time, which was a decrease of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars that was in our, our proposed budget prior to this. In the mental health tax fund one sixty-four, um, the property tax, um, went up two thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars to two hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars. And in fund, um, one ninety, the veterans assistance, the property tax was estimated at a hundred and forty-five thousand and is now a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars, a decrease of five hundred and fifty-three dol- oh, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, sorry.
What are you reading on that? I'm, I'm, let's see.
Oh, I have my notes.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking for it. I'm going, I, I, I believe you though, Jennifer. Go ahead, sorry.
I wrote down five hundred and fifty-three and it's five thirty-three, uh, five hundred and thirty-three dollar increase. So the new proposed budget for the general fund is, um, including beginning fund balances, seventy-one million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. And, um, that's revenue and expense. And then for the special funds, we're looking at a hundred and ten million, nine hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars for revenue and expense, including beginning and ending fund balances. The grand total for all funds is a hundred and eighty-two million, two hundred ten thousand, four hundred and two dollars for both revenue and expense. Um, so Commissioners, if you are okay with this, I, um, will have I T posted on the website and we can get ready for budget adoption on December.
Before you, before you do, I have something I'd like to talk to the commission about. Uh, if you don't mind. So Commission, we've been going through something here recently, uh. I, I love what we've done with the budget and I think it's a strong budget. Uh, I appreciate all the work we've done, but I'm going to break, uh, a rule I usually have. I, I usually just let things go at this point, but I'd like to ask you to consider something. I'd like to ask you to consider adding in one new corrections deputy position, and I'll explain why. It's not just money going in now. Uh, years ago, we used to have thirty plus, uh, corrections officers, corrections deputies. We traded them off, uh, not us personally at the request of the sheriff's department. We traded off some of those positions for C S O positions. As we just found out recently, although we're doing well and we've just hired a bunch, uh, we've put ourselves that when we do lose a certain amount, we put ourselves at risk of not having the minimum necessary for, uh, for, uh, manning or, or, you know, personnel to, to, for, for minimum requirements. I'd like you to consider this because I want you to also understand that a, a, uh, corrections deputy position could also work inside the, the booth as a C S O if need be. So they can do both as we were having issues, uh, over the past with both positions. And I also want to remind you that if it does not get filled, uh, that that money does come back to the county. And then the third part is, is it allows us to, even if we start to get filled or get to that point that we don't stop recruiting, we keep to move, moving on. So it, uh, it, it fixes quite a few different issues. It, it gives the ability to keep looking for new personnel. It, uh, uh, ups how many positions we have to help capture and cover any of our, uh, our minimum, uh, personnel requirements. It also allows them to be able to use that person inside that booth and outside that booth, and the money comes back to us. I thought long and hard about this. This is not something I've come up with lightly to ask you. Uh, because I know it puts you in a bad position, especially this late in the game. But I'm asking now, would you please consider that at this point? Um, understanding that if it doesn't get filled, that money does come back to us. But it sure would give us the cushion that would help us in the future.
So how many? I know we have quite a few positions open currently. So I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering how adding one more.
By, by.
Even if we can't fill it, because we're not being, we're, we're not able to fill them. Nobody across the state is able to fill position.
Actually, we're doing, uh, we're doing better. We've just brought in, I believe it was three new ones. Uh, and there are more coming on. And again, even if we get up to the point where we have our twenty-seven that we currently have, that's such a minimum, uh, that we should consider having more than that in the future anyway. Uh, to make sure that we have enough people in there to, to, so we don't ever have a situation, we have one again. We may not be able to fill it, but if we don't have it, we never will be able to fill it. But if we get up to twenty-seven, we can continue to try and bring more people in. But I think it's needed in there and we are doing a good job of filling them regardless of what it looked like in the paper. Uh, and we've been giving quite a few benefits in order to improve our abilities to hire, unlike, uh, not trying to throw county under the bus, but we don't have twenty-seven, uh, missing like Thurston. We don't have, uh, uh, fifty like Pierce. So that one difference, that one extra person may give us the breathing room that we need in the near future. Because if we can keep it at twenty-six or twenty-seven, uh, and only be two or three down, then we're two or three down from a, a new number, and that gives us ability to have protection in that jail. We need it. I honestly believe we need it, uh. I'm wishing that now after these years that I would not have agreed to lower down the personnel level of corrections officers in order to hire more C S Os. And I, I talked with, uh, the sheriff about this and, and asked him, you know, where he was on this. I don't know if he's on today or, or not. But I did ask him and when he did, when I did, he seemed to be very, very supportive of it.
Yes, I, I asked Mary how many we were down currently and, um, she, she says she thinks, um, four.
Yeah, we're down six, I thought, or seven. We just hired, we just did three.
Right, we just hired three and three and one C S O.
Yep, and then I think we have another one or two on the, on the line. I, it'd be nice if we could fill it. We never want to ha- get down to one like we did. We had one covering a big portion of that jail by themselves, and that should never happen. I have not been able to live with that one ever since I found that out. And again, I don't think we're at risk. If we do this and they do not fill it, that money does come back in our ending fund balance. Do you have an opinion, Mark? I'm just curious what you think.
Well, I, I think it, I mean, it makes sense to me, uh, if we were able to fill it, that it kind of helps smooth out the bumps uh, along the way in the sense of staffing needs. Um, you know, having a, an additional position in there to kind of rove around and cover um, different vacations and, and time off work. Uh, if individuals get hurt, you know, I, I think it does add some, some capacity to the resources that, uh, Chief Hanson has. And if we don't fill it, then it's not like it, that money is gone.
Your thoughts?
Yeah, this is, um, this is a fun surprise here at the eleventh hour for us to consider. It's okay, it's all right. Um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm torn. I mean, obviously we want to see, we want to see staffing continue to improve. I think it's fantastic that Sheriff Spurling swore in, uh, several new folks on the correction side last week. Um, and, and I, you know, I certainly you know, understand the challenges with, with recruiting and, and retaining over there, but, um, yeah, I, you know, I, the other thing for us to keep in mind here too is, you know, we can always come back and add. we can always come back and add this type of position. Um we're still waiting for the union to to get back to us on a number of things. Um you know, and so I I I might be more inclined in letting them actually come back to us on outstanding items before deciding on a position. Um and then the other factor to that is, I think Mary is going to be talking about um settling the the guilt contract and so we're going to need to add some stuff to this to this budget anyway, so. Sorry, I'm just I'm just sort of thinking through this on the fly.
I know, and I again, I apologize. Just so you know, though, uh I only thought about it myself after uh some of the things that we were faced with and I uh because I cannot talk to you guys directly, I did mention to Mark last week, and that was the best that I could do at the time. So again, I I I'm very sorry because I know this puts you on the spot. But I really honestly thought it through and thought to myself right now, this is the best thing that I can do to try and help make sure that 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 understaffing on that in case a bad thing happens doesn't happen again. One person does make a huge difference, even if they were in the control room but could come out where the other C S O, a regular C S O cannot.
Yeah, so just a point of clarification on that. My understanding is that regardless of who's working in the control room, they can't come out.
Yes, but they could bring somebody else in. It's easier. Apparently, it's easier to get a C S O to come in uh after hours or or such than it is to get a a deputy who's already worked twelve. They did overtime. They just put in sixteen hours.
I'm not I'm not worried about being put on the spot or anything, you know, that doesn't bother me at all. I think what go. I would like to because we do have so much more to add to the budget um in other areas um that like the sheriff's office. I don't know. This one, this one I'd like to think about. I'd like to uh maybe work on the relationship first with that we have over there and then go from there. I with with open positions, I'd rather have, I'd rather work on on filling those open positions than create a position that now they have to feel that they can't feel, if that makes sense.
I just appreciate you hearing me out. Uh again, I I I know you you didn't have a chance to think as long as I have, so I did the best I can just trying to think of what the right answer would be, and it seemed like it was the lowest risk with the greatest benefit. And that's why I I made the recommendation. But I understand completely. I'm not sure how I would feel if I was on the other side, and this was sprung on me on the last minute. And as I said, I was hoping uh the best I can do is be to tell their staff and see if it gets out there to you or not, but uh I'll accept whatever you do. I'm not going to push on it. I just appreciate you giving me the opportunity to at least say it.
Jennifer, what would be the what would be the cost associated with with a position like this?
I believe it would be roughly um a hundred thousand wi- including benefits, but um I don't have that number right in front of me um. So yeah, somewhere somewhere in there.
That's always the safe one. You know, it's going to be between eighty five and a hundred K depending where they they uh hire him.
Yeah, I mean, and it I mean, this kind of goes without saying, but I mean, we're already six point seven million out of balance currently. And if they don't fill it, then you know, it stays. It doesn't have any effect on our cash, but if they do and they fill all the other positions, then you know, that has a significant impact on cash. So that's something else to keep in mind, I guess.
I'm a little concerned about as we move forward, so many other counties um that I spoke with last last week. A lot of them are having to cut positions. So I want to be very cautious moving forward. Um I don't want to create more difficulties for us if we don't need to have them created.
Mary, did you have something you wanted to add? I saw you pop up.
I just wanted to share and mention my name, so I didn't want to be absent.
I appreciate your help.
Uh it's, yeah. So I mean, I'll just, I mean, I'm probably I'm probably a no right now as I as I think about think through it, but I'm not like a no forever. I I, you know, I I would be happy to revisit this conversation. I think if we had a little bit more information on um what this might do for minimum staffing from the sheriff's office. I mean, that's an operational conversation to have. They're not part of this. It wasn't part of their workshop or briefing. So I I I want to make sure that what we're doing is something that they think would benefit their operational needs versus us guessing and trying to do something for them that might not. Um and then the other side of it, too, is I want to see some movement from the union on on the uh items that are outstanding to them from us.
Continuing conversation is what I'm hearing.
Commissioner, unless you wanted to convert one of the other positions that we've already agreed to to this instead.
Yeah, I I can't. You can probably imagine I can't do that without them here on online or anything. Uh and again, I I just appreciate, I can understand that's hard decision, especially where we're at financially. I just had thought it out and thinking uh with the past, I think that was a mistake that was on our part. It was at the request of the sheriff's department. But uh I can't get out of my mind the fact that we just had a situation where we had somebody put in in such a bad position. I want to make sure for at all possible, at least try not to let that happen again. But that doesn't mean it has to happen today. Maybe we have this discussion after some further discussion with the sheriff or anything else. Uh I understand you're not saying no. Uh uh yeah, we're just, I I put you in a bad position to even ask it at this time, but this was the only time I could ask it uh if it was a chance to get it into the budget.
Yeah, and I I mean, so and I guess, I you know, I I certainly empathize with the situation with, you know, the staffing issue that you're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't know how this helps that in in the immediate future. I then that's why I think having this conversation with the sheriff's office on, you know, might help, you know, because I mean, we're just creating a position that wouldn't be on the books until January that may go unfilled for who knows how long, you know, and so are there other operational things that that can happen? Or are there other conversations that can happen that might be more impactful on a quicker timeline? So I think that's kind of where my if I if I thought that if we created this position right now that, you know, that would that would solve the totality of the issue, then you know, I would I'd be a yes a hundred times over. But I'm not sure that without having the conversation about the operational needs that it gets us exactly where we need to be, but still open to it in the future.
Thank you, guys, for your consideration.
Yeah, I would I would agree with Commissioner Judy. It's it's a and and understand the the need also, but we still do have four open positions and four that were just filled to include the C S O, so. Yeah, looking forward to conversations with the sheriff's office.
Okay, so um so commissioners, with that, are you comfortable with me putting this on the website?
Yes.
And I just will clarify, too, that um my statement about us being out of balance. Um I mean, we are in balance, our budget, the inter-period equity portion, meaning what we are expecting to receive in twenty four is out of balance. So um and what we are expecting to receive and use in twenty twenty four would be out of balance by that six point seven million roughly. So um that's what I meant by that. Our total budget is in balance for twenty twenty four.
What did we end up with our ending fund balance rollover?
Uh I'm expecting that we're going to be about twenty eight million.
And that's what you have in our in our budget?
Yes. Um and just to clarify, for tomorrow's levy public hearing um on the resolutions that are in the packet, uh there's two resolutions that say the total amount to levy for twenty twenty, it says twenty twenty three, and I've changed those to twenty twenty four. And I'll make that um change tomorrow during the public hearing as well. Um just wanted to clarify that those are for twenty twenty four, not twenty twenty three.
So the only um the only question that I have relative to posting the budget today is I think Mary is going to brief us on another contract settlement uh here shortly and and it looks like we're going to try to do a special meeting next Tuesday to sign up on our part of it. Um but just wondering how you'd like to have that factored into the twenty twenty four budget.
If I can have that change uh by next Tuesday, then I can incorporate that into the the budget that we adopt on December fourth. And I'll just state that change publicly during the public hearing for the budget on the fourth. So the only other budget thing that I wanted to bring up was the Beards Cove that um Public Works briefed on, the forty thousand. I'll I'll be bringing that um forward for the meeting, not Public Works, um since it since it is budget related. So um I got the question from Public Works whether they needed to brief it or or me, so um just wanted to clarify that. Um and the last thing that I have is an update on the chart of accounts. Um so uh the chart of accounts has proven to be um an enormous monster, um much bigger than we thought, and we met with um the Munis um our Munis person that's helped us with our chart of accounts, the programmer there, and um she stated that we're going to need three months just for the Munis portion for from the time that we do our first actual test run in Munis. We're allowed three test runs. Um we're not quite ready for that in um in Munis, so anyway, we're going to need three months, which would put us at about roughly um you know, beginning of March at the very earliest that we would be ready to implement the chart of accounts. Um the subsidiary systems, the Tarascan being our our largest one, we're not ready for that. So I'm thinking it's going to be um some sometime mid next year that we're ready to do the chart of accounts conversion, which I know is not the news that you were wanting. It's not the news I was wanting to give. Um but we're going to continue to work on this and keep you apprised of what's happening and um get it done at our earliest time timeframe.
Yeah, what a what a chore this has proven to be. Sure, Lisa could could chime in on that one and Leo and everybody else. So appreciate what you're doing here and and I'm fine with extending. We don't we we never did adopt anything saying that we would that it would be done by a certain time, did we? So we don't have to do anything formally.
No, I just wanted to keep everybody um you know, in the loop of what's going, you know, as far as what's happening and um I mean, like Marcus said, it took them years to do their Thurston County conversion. Um but I I thought we could do it faster, you know, but um it's just proving to be really um trying on everyone. We're just, we're meeting uh more regularly now to try to get this, you know, try to keep the momentum going because it's easy to put it off, I think, and if um if we're not, you know, meeting and it's not on the forefront, so. Um so sorry to be the bearer of bad news on that one.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Darned to fill out like I five construction.
Agreed. Something you never want to be compared to. I have construction. Okay, thank you. That is all that I have.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jen. We got Board of Equalization now. Becky?
Yes, good morning. So um state law requires that the Board of Equalization show that the number of timely filed and completed assessment appeals for the current year, twenty twenty three, meet the threshold to proceed with hearing appeals. So this has been met by the filing of six hundred plus petitions this year, which is approximately three times as many as last year. And so we asked that the commissioners approve the B O E to begin their process of hearing appeals and also a give consideration for additional funding as necessary to hear the appeals. And we asked that this be moved to the December five action agenda if. Okay.
Yeah, I know you you guys have had a ton of appeals coming in.
Yes.
So I just wanted to really highlight that that was dual uh responsibilities in H R than the sheer volume of petitions we got this year, like Becky said, three times, it's two hundred and eleven. Now this year, six hundred and ten. Um so understanding that H R stretched a little bit, um and we're trying to do what we can and move resources around. So for example, recruitment, civil service, helping out. Um and I wanted to recognize Danielle um in the Commissioner's Office for her assistance as well as scanning and getting everything logged, but it's a significant increase. Um and has been a significant increase of workload for us, for Becky specifically.
I want to clarify uh for anybody that's out there in the public listening uh uh because we have that many does not mean that the staff or the assessor did anything inappropriate or wrong. Uh it's been a crazy two years of remember, I also have a real estate license, and they do not do it just based on the last year. They go back a couple of years on how they're doing it for two years and stuff. And I can assure you, that was an absolutely crazy year. And the sad part is for the for all of you is uh uh you're looking at it, wanting to fight it, but you're going to find that your homes were worth a lot more than they were uh before that. They just are. Uh doesn't mean that you shouldn't fight it because sometimes there are mistakes made, but please keep that in mind that it may actually be what they said it was worth. And with that being said, I got to just throw it out there. No, the county is not trying to get more money. That's not how it works. You have the same pot that we do every year. We haven't even raised taxes in years. Uh two thousand eighteen, you paid a hundred thirty one dollars per thousand. Two thousand twenty three, you paid eighty one cents per thousand, probably going to be closer to seventy three cents per thousand. So next year, uh we're not gouging yet. The more that your property goes up does not change how much the the county gets except for on new construction.
Well said.
All right, so you want us to if this, if you agree with this, to move this to the action agenda on December fifth, if uh then the board can proceed with their uh hearing of the appeals. And also we're asking again for um additional funding. I hear, just heard the previous conversations. It's kind of a crazy time, but they'll they'll be hearing more appeals this year, and I don't know that the budget's going to cover that.
Well, I can support it. Let's tell I have that number and I have a staff bringing it forward, but I definitely can tell you I understand. I would expect it.
We have an estimate on on what we think it's going to cost.
I don't.
I would probably, I mean, if we have three times the number, maybe three times the cost would be my initial, but we can work on that for you. It's just hard to tell until you kind of get into the process a little bit.
Right, is that something that we could bring forward um to at a later date when we do have a the right number and yet but just go ahead and um support the the need for more time and energy, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the one thing to remember that uh even if we pass the budget uh tomorrow, the amount that's in there will cover at least a third of of the year, if not more, because I think there's an economy of scale. So I don't think it should be three times as much, but we'll see what it what it is. But you you should be covered for at least a third of the year with uh the current budget, even if things were horrible. So I think if it had to, it could wait until the the first change in the budget, if it had to.
Right, so we go ahead and and approve the the action requested on the the form.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your hard work, too.
Yeah, the last item on our agenda today is the um this is the grant that we received um through the Department of Commerce. So la- last year, legislature uh awarded us a a million dollars to um go out and do our jail study. So this is more of a um kind of dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So this is a contract with the Department of Commerce. Uh Tony and I have been working with them to fill out all of the necessary information to show the work that we're doing. Uh, Tony and I have been working with them to fill out all of the necessary information to show the work that we're doing. Uh, and then, I believe that they. Docu-signed email, went to Sharon to approve as the chair. Uh, which she diligently approved, and I was looking back thinking, when did I formally get this approved from the board, um? And I, and I couldn't find it, and so this is an item that I did want to bring forward, uh, to ensure that, um, that we. That we got this proof.
And I know we've talked about it in the past, but making it. A lot, yes. Yeah, no, I'm completely support.
Yeah, I'm all good moving it forward.
Dave? Great. So that's all we had for you today. Happy to answer any questions?
Do you have any administrator updates, of course?
I think I got them, I just noticed that Leo got on the line, and, and Leo, uh, you weren't on, but I did update the board on our. Um, issue with the state auditor's office, so.
You want to talk about, uh? Deputy Guild contract?
That's what I was hinting at.
Good hint. That's why they're still looking at me with that mean look, okay, Mary, go for it.
Morning commissioners, we just found out this morning, as the vote closed, um, last night, that. The, um, deputies guild has, uh, voted their RTA contract unanimously in favor of, so we're looking to. Um, have on the, an action agenda, the approval for the January twenty-two to December twenty-five collective bargaining agreement. For the Mason County Sheriff's Office Employees Guild Deputy Sheriffs, I didn't realize what a mouthful their group is until just a second, um. So the exclusive representatives, um, we've reached a tentative agreement for the twenty-two to twenty-five term. Um, I just did want to point out that this was a, a very collaborative negotiation process and. Um, working with our consultant and the guild, um, I thought was a, a. Great example of teamwork, um, and then I will, and again, I apologize, we did not have time to put an actual briefing together, but. We'll be able to have an action agenda item available, and I believe that the board would like to have a special meeting next week.
Right. At one o'clock, I believe, because we do have the board of health, and I think that that's what we decided would work best.
Yeah, so if we can do a special meeting. On November twenty-eighth at one o'clock to, um, sign our portion of the agreement, that'd be. Great, as opposed to waiting the two weeks.
I one hundred percent wholeheartedly agree and look forward to it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, great work.
Yes, thank you and the team.
Yep, great work.
Hey, Mark, any other administrator updates?
Waiting for somebody to remind me of something else, I forgot, but no, I don't believe I do.
All right, and I can't remember if we had anything else to do, but. For commissioner discussion, we do, I do want to bring up the advisory board application, see, I didn't forget.
Good to say, that's the big one, I'm comfortable putting, uh, Mr. Payne to the advisory board.
As am I.
All right, as am I. So if we could let him know.
I think they have, so we could probably wait until December fifth.
Yes. Agreed.
And you did that all on your own, Commissioner, we forgot.
But who, for me and my notes. All right, commissioners, do we have, um, commissioner discussion, I have a couple of things, but if you guys would like to go first, that'd be fine.
I have a couple of things, but I'll defer to you, go for it.
Ah, great, okay, so, um, we, last week was the, uh, WASAC. Washington State's Association of Counties Conference, and man, what a conference it was, it was so full of great information. So many, uh, commissioners, council members. There that. It, it's, it's kind of cool to go to and know that. Your issues are not special to your county. That all the counties are, are feeling pretty much the same thing that we're feeling, so it, that was, that was rather uplifting. Um, I was also voted into the, um. The board for WASAC. Not the executive team, thank goodness, but just. The, their, their board, but that, that, that was cool, too. Um. Some really good. Breakout sessions. We got some things coming toward us that we found out through the legislature. So we'll keep an eye on those, LSC, I, you know, that the, the legislature begins, I think it's, is it the sixth of January?
I think it's the eighth.
The eighth, okay. And so session starts then, so we'll be keeping an eye on, on what's coming toward us. And either fighting or supporting.
I'm sure I watched part of, uh, tha- that meeting, what was the outcome on the weighted voting?
That was quite the debate, so. That, it's status quo. We will remain where we are, e- every county gets the same vote. Um, I fought hard for that, I didn't feel that the other represented the rural counties well.
Great job, Commissioner, in case I haven't told you.
Thanks. Thanks, yeah, that was, the, the meeting was supposed to be two hours, we went four and a half. It was a very lively and very in-depth. Um, discussion. And, um.
Well, this commissioner one hundred percent agrees with you.
Thank you. And that was a very good question, too. But I think that's all I have. Commissioner Shudy?
Yeah. Uh, so just a, a couple of quick things, um. So, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife had reached out, uh, regarding being interested in, um, sharing some space at our new. Office in Belfair, um, and so they have. Uh, some you, uh, equipment that we utilize, that they utilize, that we share, uh, on water callouts and things like that, and so. Um, I wanted to pass that on to Mark and see if he and Kelly could talk to them about what that might look like, or if there are any issues with our contract. Um, but a good, a good state agency to partner with, and they seem to indicate that there would be some. Uh, money that they could, uh, put towards it. Uh, to help us out a little bit, so I. Just wanted to advise the commission and. See if we're okay with Mark having further conversation with. Uh, the regional lieutenant from Fish and Wildlife.
I think that's awesome.
And then the other one, tis the season, uh, prior to COVID, we had invited, uh, some. Uh, I think North Mason's Band and some carolers in prior to Christmas to do some caroling and Christmas music. Uh, in the lobby and around the, the county, and wanted to see if. As things are now, feels like things are now mostly back to normal, uh, what the commission thought about re-inviting. Some of those groups back to spread some Christmas cheer in our offices.
Oh, I love that idea.
Yep, I'll help kick into supply pizza.
Excellent. Yeah, they, it was always kind of a highlight, at least for, I mean, I don't know how our. Folks out in the lobby or work near there felt about it, but it's a, uh. We are Christmas town, so, uh. So, great, I'll, uh, I'll work on that. That's all I have, commissioners.
I did have one more thing, um, turning point, we, we are doing a, um. A toy drive. Up in the Belfair area, so Commissioner Netherland, if you could kind of pass that around, I know that they're having, they're not having this success. That we would like them to have, or that they would like to have as far as getting that going, so.
Commissioner, I can personally change that. I have, a- aside from, uh, getting the word out, I actually have. A bunch of stuff to, to go in there, toys and stuff. Uh, a lot, and so we'll change that immediately.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Devon, love it, Nether, do you have anything, horse?
Nope. Just a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned, see you guys tomorrow, um, or safe travels.
See you tomorrow.